The May 9, 2019 meeting of Peters Township Planning Commission. Ed Rolka.
Mr. Selephus will not be here. Mr. Cartiffilis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Magreeno?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
And Ms. Corble will not be here tonight.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the April 11, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion please, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports and correspondence?
None.
Site plan subdivision filed for review.
Two. Revise site plan for Sorelli Eye Care Center, East Mcmurray Road, expanding their parking lot. And two, simple re-subdivision, lot line shift on the Lutes property on Thomas Road.
Very good. Any comments on the agenda? Hearing none. Any audience comments for items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, move on. There's no old business, onto new business. Planning Commission recommendation, final plan is in Madeira, re-subdivision, Thomas Road?
Keep it close. Okay. This is an aerial overview of the area. Bennett Wood, who's here tonight, owns recently purchased 17.71 acres. Believe it or not, it's currently split between five lots. Our GIS system still shows it as two, but it's technically five lots. This is a simple re-subdivision. Mr. Bennett Wood is proposing the Madeira plan, and what it does, it combines five lots into two. Proposed Lot 1, which is up on the right with the house, with the big circular driveway up there. That is proposed Lot 1, which is 6.377 acres, and it's a combination of lots 104, 105, and 106 in the high fill trace plan of lots, and that plan was recorded in 1988, back when that house was built on that lot. At that time, in the 80s, the township allowed for homes to be built over multiple lot lines. We've since changed that and want people to consolidate before they start building over lot lines. So this will clean that up. And then on the bottom, he is proposing Lot 2, which is 11.33 acres, and it's a combination of lots 106 and 107 in the high fill trace plan. This area of Peters is zoned rural residential, and it has a five acre minimum. Both of these proposed new re-subdivided lots exceed our five acre minimum. Staff's recommending the Madeira re-subdivision plan be recommended to council for approval, subject to those eight conditions in my memo to you dated May 3, and those are basically house cleaning items on the plan. And... That's it.
I have a question or comment. So we're going from five lots to two, they still have to pay a traffic impact fee?
The... At the time of billing permit on Lot 2, they would have to pay a traffic impact.
Just because that's a big, single-family house and nothing's there?
There's nothing there now, and it was not an excluded area when we established our traffic impact fee zones.
Is the septic tank on Lot 1 going to remain?
Yes. Yes.
And because it's a...
There's no public sewer there.
There is not?
No.
Understood. Any other comments, Mr.? Comments from the public? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. The Planning Commission approved the recommendation of the Madeira re-subdivision plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That brings us to JP Morgan Chase Bank, Washington Road. It's a planning commission approval.
This is the former... It was the JP Morgan consolidation plan that was before Planning Commission at last month's meeting, where they separated the parcel out as part of the Donaldson's Cross Shopping Center. This parcel is general commercial. General commercial zoning on all sides, retail uses surrounding it on all sides. The applicant is proposing a 3,470 square foot Chase Bank facility, anywhere between 26 foot to 19 foot tall, depending on if you're measuring the height of the gable, the height of the parapet. The applicant is proposing a number of stormwater management facilities throughout the site. They've recently received additional comments from Gateway Engineering regarding some of their stormwater management facilities that they will be addressing as part of one of our conditions. They're proposing to replace the building along Washington Road, parking interior facing the rest of the shopping center, landscaping surrounding the parking lot and little bit in throughout. This is an approval use in our district, meeting all of our parking requirements. They are proposing a freestanding sign out front that will be required to be a monument style sign as per the variance that carries through with the property that was previously obtained. The building itself, utilizing a couple different primary materials, some EFS materials, some brick, some CME block, just kind of maintaining a consistent facade throughout the four sides of the building. The top right here would be what you would see from Washington Road. This would be the elevation seen from the inside of the parking lot. This would be the elevation as seen from the north, and this would be the elevation as seen from the south. We are proposing a drive-through ATM as part of their site plan, kind of a two-lane drive-through that goes into one, and then would circle back throughout the site. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Staff would recommend approval of the Chase Bank site plan with the 11 comments that we have established in our report.
Could you flip back to the site plan?
Sure. You want this one or the...
That one's fine.
Okay. That's fine. It's a little bit easier to read, yeah.
Yeah, just making sure I have a handle on the traffic, circulation.
If the sign was desired, where would it be placed?
They had shown on their site plan approximately in this location.
You see it, Dave?
No. Oh, I see you. Down in the corner, left.
Let me go back, because you can see it on here. It's right...
Hi, Michael Tackings with Boulder Engineering. The sign that's actually on there is actually out there today. We have not really gone through the process of working on a signing package beyond just their typical what would be on the building. We would be planning on coming back and basically meeting the township requirements for a monument sign. But my guess would be it would be located in that... It's going to be in that same general area.
Right.
Down in this quadrant here, because anywhere else is really not going to have visibility. The bank is sitting significantly higher than Washington Road at that location, but it's the same way the work being does today.
How much greater is the current sign, or I guess what we call the grandfather sign from the previous variants, for the current coordinates?
We have not seen any square footage for their proposed freestanding sign. I mean, that would all come through a sign permits after their site plan approval anyways. We would make sure that it's in accordance with the previously obtained variance.
I don't know what that's...
It's not very big.
I don't think it's very big.
I assume you guys are going to repave that whole site?
The entire site, yes. It's bound by the property. It's very...
Breaking.
It's very, very rundown.
Yeah, yes. That'd be nice upgrade.
Yeah.
Nice that you're getting in there and doing that, you don't have a... I think it's a good look.
Well, Chase has made a decision and a commitment to come to... Oh, sorry. To come to Western Pennsylvania. This site here and the site that's in Upper St. Clair are the first two that have actually progressed through to the design and planning stages. With any luck, I think, provided everything goes smoothly the rest of the way, the one here in Peters should be the first. It should be ahead of the one in Upper St. Clair.
Do they have actual... I mean, a lot of these banks are going to be... Vervidia, Virgil, right? This will be a regular?
This will be a regular bank. This will be a regular bank. A lot of the banks are trying, they're doing a mix of the two. The Bank of America that's sitting there at Donaldson's...
Square.
Square, yeah. There's nobody there. It's all virtual. But then they are still building ground-up branches with people inside.
St. Clair there.
Correct. Yeah.
Where's the Chase in St. Clair?
The proposed site is actually right between the Key and the Bank of America, right on Washington Road there. So...
I like their greens and the whole, so...
Yeah.
Let's go.
Any other audience comments? Mr. Comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for Planning Commission approval for Chase Bank at 3903 Washington Road. I'll second.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. That brings us to Planning Commission recommendation, Venetia Industrial Consolidation Plan, Venetia Road.
Yeah. Venetia Group LLC, owners of the four lots that you see highlighted there on Venetia Road. There are four lots in the Venetia Industrial Plan, and that plan was recorded in 1992. They're seeking township approval for... They're seeking township approval for the consolidation of those four lots into one big lot of 3.27 acres. It's Lot 101 on the proposed plan. They're combining those lots to accommodate the new Venetia Postal Plaza, which is the next item on the agenda. This area of Peters is zoned west Venetia Road mixed-use corridor. Minimum lot size in the zoning district is a half acre. Proposed Lot 1 is 3.27 acres. Staff's recommending, the Planning Commission recommended council that we approve this consolidation plan, subject to those nine conditions listed in my memo to you dated May 2.
Do we have someone to speak here on behalf of the applicant?
I'm actually here for the next...
Well, you know what's going on here, right?
Yeah. Your name, sir?
Justin Butler. I'm from the A&E group. We're the designers for the Postal Plaza.
Understood.
So they're combining four lots into one. I don't know if you want me to get into the other part?
No, no.
No, that's fine. So the next item on the agenda is through the site design?
Correct.
All right.
This is just simply combining these four lots into one lot.
Got it.
This is close to the storage sheds that are...
It's immediately west of the storage units. Same owner owns the storage units that own this property.
Okay, that's a site plan approval. I apologize. I got kind of two things there. It seems pretty straightforward, Ed.
This part is straightforward, honestly. Combining four lots into one lot.
Understood. Well, future discussion of the next item for the agenda, the site plan design, any comments from the commissioners or audience regarding the consolidation plan of these four lots? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this consolidation plan with the... In mind with the nine conditions outlined in the memo dated May 2, 19.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That'll bring us to the next, the site plan of this exact plan, Venetia Postal Plaza.
Same location, obviously. Zoned west Venetia mixed-use corridor. Sign would be 3.27 acres after the consolidation, owned by Venetia Group LLC. They are proposing the new Venetia Postal Plaza, which would be a total 8,452 square foot building with two tenants. 3,752 square feet of the building will be reserved for the United States Postal Service. The other 4,700 square feet is reserved for a future tenant. They've designated it as a professional office at this time. They are proposing two service parking lots. One, this elevation higher than this elevation, the upper side being the service for the postal service, with the loading bay included. The lower parking lot would simply be servicing the additional tenant in the future. Both parking lots have their own separate dumpster enclosures located at the rear of the parking lot. In terms of stormwater management, the applicant is currently proposing two stormwater basins that would collect roof leaders from the parking lot of the structure, one of which is located at the northwest corner of the site, the other which is located at the southwest corner of the site. Both of these would then discharge into this swale here that runs south to the railroad right-of-way. In terms of building design, similar color scheme to the Chase Bank that we saw earlier. We're seeing three primary building materials, brick and stone facade on all sides, with a hip gable-style roof with black asphalt shingles. This here, it's somewhat of a misleading elevation, because you would only really be seeing this much from Venetia Road as you run across here, but you would be seeing the post office sign and a portion of the building as seen here from Venetia. This elevation over here would be from the southern end of the site. This would be your entrance to the postal service from the east, where you would see the loading bay, but the loading bay would not be visible from Venetia Road. This is the lower portion of the site where the additional future tenant would be located. They are proposing some landscaping along Venetia Road. In order to screen them from Venetia Road, we've also discussed with the applicant some additional screening over here to screen off this residential structure over here off to the west. It's one of our comments, and they have yet to receive an official letter of comments from Gateway Engineers, but that is additional comment. They still need to get through the review process within final access with us. Staff is recommending approval of the Venetia Postal Plaza land development located at 504 Venetia Road, subject to the 22 conditions listed in my report. However, I do have three modifications to those conditions. Condition number five, that states the grade of the proposed parking lot along the access between the upper and lower lots be modified as to not exceed the maximum permitted 7% grade. Condition's going to be removed. We consider it a driveway, not a parking area, because the 7% excess area does not have parking spaces located along it. So we're removing that condition completely. Condition 13, that talks about lighting details, shapes and height be required. They did provide that in a portion of their site plan. It was somewhat of an overlook on our end, but we still would require them to provide the actual details of the lights themselves. We're removing basically the condition about the photometric plan, because that was provided by the applicant. And condition number 16, they had shown on their site plan some Type 31 SC guide rail throughout the site. We would like to see that be utilized as a decorative wooden guide rail if possible, if it can still service the same function. It is necessary on some sections throughout the site, but with an understanding it's a little bit unsightly, we want to see that as a decorative wood if possible. Again, we are recommending approval of the site plan, subject to our conditions with those three modifications. And of course, we have the engineers here going through the application.
Thank you. Would you mind restating your name to the record, please?
Justin Butler from the A&E group.
Fantastic. I do a question regarding the stormwater management landscaping. So in the front on Venetia Road, we mentioned there was going to be some planting screening. Could you just go over the function? I'm not so concerned about the stormwater pond, I believe it is in the back, but on the front, could you just go through the function, what the aesthetics of that would be, that depression that's going to collect stormwater from a parking lot?
Right now, it's a grassed detention basin. The exact size of the detention basins hasn't been completely figured out yet. We'd like to get rid of one if we could, which would be the one along Venetia. But other than that, it's your standard grassed stormwater detention basin.
Are you going to put landscaping around it, or it's just simply grass? Because those can be somewhat unsightly, especially when they start getting sediment and getting utilized quite well.
Yeah.
It's the front edge of the Venetia Road, I'm just trying to make sure it's not going to be...
That was one of the comments that was in the letter.
Back of the house.
We'd like to address that. The only issue with putting trees in front of it now is the slope from the road to the detention basin. It's quite the slope. I don't know if you can actually plant trees on it, so that's why we'd like to try to limit it to one detention basin at the lower end of the site if possible.
Will you be expanding the lower detention basin, or...
I guess at this point, we've submitted stormwater management for Gateway Review.
It seems that would be further along. So I'm just trying to understand what would let you allow... What would allow you to eliminate the northern basin?
We're waiting for infiltration testing on the site, and once we get that, then we'll make our final design.
Got it.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think I'd rather not see that.
Yeah.
You probably will also see the process of...
Right. It's one thing if it's a wet pond, it's amenity with a spring, something that's more aesthetic, but just a grassed detention pond is rather unsightly, and it's more appropriate in the back, as you have it here for the other pond. So there's a... I would highly recommend we look at that carefully with respect to a little bit of beautification on that, especially it's a front road. And another question with respect to the additional transparency on the Venetia facade.
Yep.
Just go back to that slide.
Yep.
That's upper left, right?
Yeah, we were focusing on this area right here in particular. We just kind of noticed a lack of transparency on the building and created a bit of a blank wall. We had a conversation with someone from A&E group earlier this week. They'd be working with the architect to see if they can address that at all possible.
Is it the intent to have the post office take what I'll call the upper floor, and then the lower floor around back would be professional office?
That's correct. The post office takes the entire first floor to the left of that elevation that we're looking at. That's the retail side. To the right is the workroom side. On the retail side of the operations, the reason that there's no window there is because that's where they have all their mail kiosks and everything for their displays. So, I mean, there's options to, you know, do some...
Spandrels, something.
Something like that.
Something that would make it look a little bit more sequential, not just a blank facade. And also, on the bottom, it may be an opportunity to provide some light in that lower level. It certainly... It's not southern-facing, but it's certainly going to open that up a little bit. Not sure what the use is of the floor plan there. It is a very blank facade.
Okay.
Is it a full two-story building?
Yes, it is.
Is the intention to park a lot of delivery trucks there?
If you can go back to the...
Working on it, yeah.
On the right parking lot, the... Everything below the loading dock is delivery trucks. I think there's a total of eight delivery vehicles that'll be there all the time. I mean, when they're not delivering.
It pays mostly down.
Right. Yeah, and they're at the far end of the site, so...
What's the square footage of the retail of the office space?
Do you...
About 4,700 square feet.
Could you also show where the guide rails are that staff mentioned?
Yeah, I might have to pull up... Let me open up our full site plan, because it's not shown on this landscape plan.
And then your intent was just to galvanize guide rail?
That was the original intent, yes.
How many layer feet do you have approximately?
It's quite a bit.
There's a lot. Yeah. I mean, they've got some pretty dramatic drops throughout the site.
It just rings the... It looks like it would ring the entire site, kind of a U-shaped around the site.
It's close to that. I mean, we can reduce that, obviously, and we have been looking into the wood guide rail as an option, but it's a safety thing with the grid change from the parking lot.
I understand, right? Seth, if they galvanize, if that's okay with my department? Should you galvanize them or not? Not to approve? Would you... I'll go with...
Would you be comfortable with a powder color, do a black or...
Potentially. I think we just don't want it to look like a...
Like it's the sign of the highway.
Right.
Shorthand. I just, I got lost with Seth, who was talking about that condition.
We like the option of wood if possible.
Okay.
Works.
This one? Yeah, there it is.
I would agree with that. I mean, certainly, it's a residence that's across the road here. They're going to be elevated. It's not trucking.
So you can see...
Plus for your retail tenants, it's going to be a great improvement.
The dotted line that surrounds the parking lot here, and some guide rail down the parking lot here, and then along where the driveway slopes downwards, they've also dotted those. So, yeah, we noticed quite a bit of a rough site, so that's why we made that comment.
Any other commissioner comments before we take public comments? Any other public comments?
Yes.
Miss Van, please come up, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kathy Hetrick, and I live on 104 Fieldstone Court. And we will get to have a prime view of the pond and all like that. I brought some visual aids. I don't know how we can get them to you.
Right there, I think there's a can of... I think I can rotate it. There you go.
Just, I had this for last, but this one right here is from our deck, and this area right here will be where the parking lot will be, and that's the next... You can see a little bit of the roof of the storage shed place that's right next door. And this is right off of our deck. So when I was speaking with Seth, he said that there would be some, what's the word? Like some landscaping to the other side of the proposed plaza where it's a residential house. But there will be nothing required here because of the commercial property that's the storage unit. But so, so we'll be looking at a parking lot and at the trash receptacle and the swamp ponds and stuff like that. That's an extreme change of the character of our property. But the first thing I really wanted to call your attention to is the intersection. Right here is the sign of where the... Where the for-sale sign is still there. And this is Pine Ridge, and this is Venetia. And it's a sketchy intersection to come out of the... Our subdivision and go on either way, right or left, onto Venetia Road. This is looking west, and it's a better view... It's a better view than you have when you pull out of our subdivision, because I was standing taking the picture. But I wanted to show there's a dip down there, and you don't... You can't see a car as it's coming. And then right here are three cars, which are the people who were killed there on that road. Then Venetia Road, and especially here, it's a windy, curvy, up and down the... Up and down, it's a country road. And this is... This here, and I'm sorry, you can't see this very well. This is approaching, this is coming from the west, up the hill, and it's 25 miles an hour there, and there's a little "watch out for the bus stop" sign there. But a lot of trucks, a lot of these people are coming up, changing gears, and they get to the top of the hill, and here is what you have. And it happens really fast. It's a curvy, windy, up and down the road kind of thing. Well, I guess the manager had suggested to a neighbor that there could be a four-way stop sign here or a red light. And my point is, is that this is a very short distance, up this hill, and then you're at that intersection. And whenever we have been talking about this with the planning people, it's... They say that the numbers, there aren't enough... There's... It won't be that busy. The post office isn't that busy. Well, I don't see how you can say that, because April 15 comes to mind, December comes to mind, 4 o'clock in the morning comes to mind whenever the postal trucks come in... to mind, four o'clock in the morning comes to mind whenever the postal trucks come in, Amazon comes in, Federal Express comes in, and UPS comes in. And then the postal, then they do their work, and the postal trucks go back out. So right there.
Are you concerned about the safety of the roadway with the intersection proposed, the Rose driveway? That's primarily the concern?
I'm concerned about the intersection. I'm concerned about the noise. I'm concerned that this has just been rushed through, and with everybody saying, oh, there won't be that much traffic, there won't, it's a, it's a low-impact thing. Well, you know, I was at the post office for fifteen minutes and six people came in fifteen minutes. And I don't know how the numbers have to add up, but I certainly know that there's a whole lot of, um, different variations on different days and how that goes. There are two hundred in the current post office, there are over two hundred post office boxes. So, I mean, we're just, I mean, and not everybody comes to their post office box every day, but you're talking about a lot of people. A lot of people prefer the little Venetia post office to get, to do their business because they don't like to deal with the one in McMurray at Donaldson Crossroads. We received information about this the Saturday between Good Friday and, um, Easter Sunday, the day after Passover began. My neighbors don't want this to happen, but they think it's already a done deal, to the point where one neighbor who was in contact and looked at the plans and stuff like that came away with the impression that the highway, um, approval had already happened.
Have the, cause we're, okay, so let's talk about the highway approval process, cause this is the PennDOT road, and Venetia's, is a PennDOT road that needs to go through the state. So any entrance that accesses, access to this road needs to be approved by the state. Have they applied for the PennDOT H O P yet?
We do have a minimum usage permit.
So you have a minimum use permit that's been applied for, for the traffic counts associated with the proposed development?
Minimum usage based on bringing fill into the site with the intent to reapply for low volume.
So what they have right now is, is what I would consider, it's a minimum usage, which they're gonna use as a temporary occupancy permit to allow them to bring fill to the site, so it's more for construction activity. Then you're applying for the low-volume H O P, which would be required for the actual use of the site, which would be the post office and the retail or professional office space below. So there's traffic counts associated with that, and you think that's low volume?
That's correct.
And have you applied for that yet?
I believe we're in the middle of that now.
So they're in the process of applying for that. Now, that's all state-regulated through PennDOT, so there are design standards, there's traffic counts, there's the I T. traffic manual that's regulated that everybody in the state utilizes to make sure that the intersections for PennDOT and the driveways on the PennDOT road are safe. So as far as Peters Township having jurisdiction on that, that's not the case. So those standards have to be put, are put in place by PennDOT, and they need to be adhered to, and PennDOT issues the permit, and that's actually our condition number ten here. So we identify that they're the jurisdiction PennDOT has for this particular-
May I speak to that?
Absolutely.
In the wintertime, our road, our Fieldstone Court, Pine Ridge, clear, fine, all, all good. You can't get out onto Venetia Road. It's, it's not been taken care of. So that would be another issue for this particular location. Um, and my other concern is that with the eagerness, first of all, Venetia needs a new post office. I mean, they need bigger place, they're growing out of there, so there is that need. And with the desire of these, I mean, I've watched eleven years, this property tried to, tried to be sold, sold. But this is a big change for our property and that intersection that nobody, you know, we didn't know about it in time to, to organize. I mean, I don't know what the law is, but, you know.
This is a, this is a by right zoning.
By right zoning.
So there's no variances requested that I'm aware of.
No.
So we put the land use code in place, and this particular use is permitted on those four lots. And they're designing for the standards of the township ordinances. They're not asking for any modification, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not asking for any modifications or variances.
Correct.
And we're here addressing their plan today that meets the code requirements outside of the twenty-two recommendations from staff, which a lot of them, I would say, are typical. There are a few that we're talking about, such as all the landscaping and the guardrails, but from a land use perspective, this body has to look at it from what's allowed and what we're, what's here.
Where are the numbers that come, that say that it's low impact for this?
It's called a low-volume driveway, and those come from, directly from the I T. E. manual, I believe.
And, and what are the numbers involved?
There's twenty-one P M. peak hour trips. So when we're looking at traffic study and how traffic works, traffic engineers, traffic engineers look at the P M. peaks, that's when most of traffic's on the road. This use, including the office space, generates twenty-one P M. peak hour trips. Our threshold for requiring traffic studies is seventy-five P M. peak hour trips. This is a low-traffic generator.
Where, how do you get that?
It's, it's-
Based on?
I T. E. trip generation manuals.
Based on?
Based on use, based on-
Based on, based on to the post office?
Based on the fact that it's a post office and professional office space, the engineers estimate how much traffic that'll generate in the P M. peak hour, four P M. to six P M.
And so, so Venetia Post Office, I mean, I, I need to see those numbers. I need to see how they, I mean, so, I mean-
There's a, so what I T. E. has done, just for a little more perspective, is they've done traffic counts on facilities of the same nature. So they sit there and they count how many people come there during the day, at what time those people come, then they plot that curve and apply variables to the square footage of that post office. So the larger square footage of a, of a use, the more trips. So based upon the size and use of the post office, plus the size and use of the retail space below, they've identified during the P M. peak, which I believe is from four P M. to six P M., is twenty-one peak hour trips. That doesn't mean only twenty-one people go there that day, that means twenty-one people go there in the peak hour. So the most people in one hour is twenty-one in the afternoon, and that's what the T I S. is based upon. And as Ed said, our threshold is seventy-five, so that's, you know, a third of what our threshold is for traffic, traffic impact study. And that is, I believe, a low-volume use as defined by PennDOT. So there's a lot of science and engineering behind that. It's not something this board or Peters Township is making up or somehow-
They're staying at this base.
It's, it's a really well-adopted code and well-adopted standard.
In addition to that, PennDOT looks at site distance and speed of the road and-
Vertical curve.
Curve, and if that driveway does not meet-
And hillside?
In hillside, and they're bringing that road up, that driveway hits Venetia fairly level, you know, very, what's the grade?
It's very mild, two percent, I think.
So it hits Venetia Road very level so that traffic coming in and out can see.
Well, that will help a little bit, but that will not take care of how that road is behind our house and how that hillside comes up and what the trucks are doing on it, off it, I think.
Would you like to come up, ma'am? Yes, please.
Rosemary Holiday. I'm Rosemary Holiday, and I bet you I've been in a classroom a lot more often than any of you guys here, because I'm sitting back there and I can barely hear you. I'm glad I can read lips. But I want to tell you about some anecdotal things that have happened. I have lived there for twelve years. The trees in those pictures have grown up and I don't see as much as I used to, but I can tell you it's one of the most dangerous parts of Venetia Road that we travel on a daily basis. The whole thing where there were two crosses, that happened before I got there, but there are more accidents along that part of the road where we live, where I can look over and see it, the middle of the night, put on my boots in the winter and try to get down there, and the farmer won't let me get to the place where the car is strewn all over the place. I can see it from my deck, but I can't get close to it. Now, that's happened more than once, and I have to tell you that the insurance companies call me as a witness because it's such a dangerous road and part of the road. So I think about the kids and how things have changed in the twelve years, and I think that we have to think really hard about taking Pine Ridge Road and connecting it to a very busy, it's gonna be busier than it, your test showed, since I live in the area and I know the traffic is horrendous also. I'm glad fracking isn't as much as it used to be. Thank you for letting me tell you about these anecdotal things. I don't have the pictures to show for it, but my daughter did take them. It's very dangerous, and I would not recommend it to be just plainly plopped there. It needs traffic control in all directions. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. To address some of the public comments, is there, I'm not familiar with the traffic improvement plan Peters has laid out, is Venetia Road, have any planned traffic improvements?
At Venetia Road in Bebout, there are traffic improvements. At Venetia in Churchill, there are traffic improvements. There are no proposed traffic improvements-
At that location?
At Pine Ridge Drive and-
I didn't know if there was anything kind of global on Venetia. Understood.
Do we know what the site distance is there to the intersection?
I don't know that exactly. That's one of our comments. We think, based on what I've been told by Tom Fadella at PennDOT, that there is adequate site distance there, but, you know, that we're recommending this plan be approved subject to PennDOT issuing that highway occupancy permit. If they don't issue that highway occupancy permit, they can't build this. We would not issue a permit for them to do anything there until they get their highway occupancy.
And the, and the traffic controls at that intersection would be stop on the two sides and straight through on the, on Venetia?
Correct, I, I think, but, you know, we're, it's subject to PennDOT H O P approval.
We, we have no input on that, is that correct, Ed?
Uh, not no input, but, um, you know, it's their decision. We, we do have input if, if we need to have input.
East, the grade is less than maybe two percent, is that correct?
Correct.
And, uh, the, um, on the east and the west, is general commercial correct?
It's all value, mixed-use corridor.
Cause it said a lot is surrounded by general commercial on-
Uh, that's, that's, I apologize, that's obviously, it's an error in my report. It's mixed, it's, it's West Venetia-
East and west is mixed use. Across the street is residential.
Any other?
What are some of the, uh, other buildings, types of uses that could go there in that district?
Well, it's a mixed-use district. It, it, it allows for a combination of office, some retail, some industrial, office warehouse. There, there could be a lot-
So there could be another major noisy industrial plant there too?
Potentially, yes. There are some light industrial-type uses that are allowed there. This area was totally zoned back in two thousand and five. It was zoned industrial, and we changed it to mixed use.
And has the potential of having triple P M. uh, traffic?
Well, there are certainly higher traffic generating uses that could go here than a post office of thirty, thirty-seven-
Thirty-seven hundred square feet.
And, you know, forty-seven square feet, forty-seven hundred square feet of office that-
Yeah, cause for four lots, you're not, that's a bigger building.
It's three point two seven acres that that building is.
That's, that's a-
It's an eight thousand, eight thousand square foot building.
And, uh, and that's pretty much when you go out, you don't have to go anymore. Can, can another building be built to the west?
Potentially, potentially.
Oh, yeah.
We would then reevaluate the trips that's generated and evaluate if that's a low, still low volume.
Driveway?
Driveway. And if it was not, they'd have to go to a medium-volume driveway and apply with those standards, which are longer site distances, et cetera, et cetera. Any other commissioner comments?
I think the traffic is slow down, but more, well, it's gonna get built out. And our, you know, we can't stop developing, but the property owner has a right to do this, and it's a gift, but, uh, I would think with a building with that, traffic would be a touch slower than would be, it picks up. So.
So you could put, uh, retail stuff there? Some limited retail, office, office warehouse, there's industrial, uh, type uses, there's, you know, for example, further in the west toward, toward Nottingham, is, there's Lighthouse Electric has a big operation there, Lynch Landscape Supply has an operation further down, you know, there's some higher intense type uses that could go there that would have more of an, an impact on the neighborhood across the street.
Is the frontage?
I had to try to go to a different point.
Concerns are very well-taken, but I just don't see that this would have any problems with the road. I mean, if there's other things like a bank or, that would go there.
Bank could go there, restaurant could go there, higher traffic generating.
I mean, even a bank, nobody, no one lives in banks anymore, right? These banks are rapidly swashing their square footage. You, you know, like Mr. Mills mentioned, they have a new bank in Township, it's completely personal, so even if a bank or something within that-
Frankly, the post offices are, I'm surprised they're building a new one.
Exactly, they're becoming obsolete, so.
And more so, you know, we have testimony that it's, it's, there's some issues on the roadway, but this roadway's not in our jurisdiction. The access to it is permitted by PennDOT, and there is a long history of the engineering analytics behind that, to which we're delegated to PennDOT. I'm not sure we can say we cannot build this building based upon simply the traffic, since it's not even raising to the level of traffic impact study. There's certainly traffic issues in the township that you should all be addressed with, but I'm not sure this is exacerbating.
I do want to say that we do have a traffic impact fee program. We do, we have identified, as we continue to build out, we've identified exactly what traffic improvements we have to make as we continue to build out. This project is subject to a traffic impact fee. They'll be paying a traffic impact fee to the township. Hopefully, at some point, we'll use it to, um, make an improvement at Venetia and Bebout. That's where, you know, the intersection needs widened and turn lanes need put in. So we are, you know, as we continue to go, continue to grow and build out, we are trying to address the traffic.
May I say something?
Please go to the microphone.
If you did, that's just kind of, you know, like, that might be good at Bebout to widen that lane there, but around the curves, and this is, you know, how we hear it at night and all like that, you, so you widen that Bebout, and then you go around the curve, and you're going up that hill, and you're, you're right there at the intersection. And so if you make it easier at Bebout, you might have more speeders, you know, coming up the hill.
Don't certainly take into account by a traffic engineer who would do any design Any further comments or discussion on the topic?
Do you have more audience comments?
Any more audience comments?
No, thank you for hearing us. I mean, the neighbors that don't, you know, they just-
If I could, we're being taped, if I can ask for more comments, please come up. Thank you so much.
Sorry? Thank you for, um, listening and hearing our comments. The neighbors who, you know, looked into this, you know, just really felt like it was already, already a done deal, and it was gonna happen, so, so they didn't, you know, get involved, and there might be some thinking that this might be a- was already, already a done deal and it was going to happen. So, so they didn't, you know, get involved. And there might be some thinking that this might be a lighter use than some other worse scenarios, but it.
I, I think, I understand your point that it's already a done deal, but I think that may be because this is, it's a use, it's zoned for a use that they're applying for. It's not, it's not that they're applying to put an amusement park here. So, you know, we can't tell them to not build this here because it's a, so it's a use that's allowed on the site. And I think, I understand your point, like, but I think, you know, I think, you know, so you have to also understand that it's a use that's allowed there, you know? We can't just say, no, you can't do it.
Right.
That's against the law.
Right, you're, you're not allowed to say no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it was, so it was baked already.
Well, it was, I mean, it was part of zoning warrants, you know, as part of the township zoning warrants, it was an approved use long ago.
Well, as long as they can show us a plan that meets all our development regulations, this planning commission has one choice, and that's to approve it. If they would not, then the owners of the property would be in a position to take us to court and win a court.
Right, yes, I understand that too. And how would a taxpayer be involved in the PennDOT review?
You can contact Seth tomorrow. We'll give you the contact person down at PennDOT to contact directly, and they'll put you in touch with whoever that staff person is working on this project, and you can give them your input.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to point out lastly, this is a recommendation council, so this will be heard.
This is a site plan approval.
This is approval, I apologize, this isn't.
The last one was a recommendation account, it's a consultation. This one is a site.
Just so you know, on the topic, it says, right, right.
Yeah, I apologize, that's, I underlined it.
That's my fault?
No. All working together, Seth, no worries. Any other audience comments? Mr. Comments, discussion? Just like to note, if we do have a motion, that we have 513 in the adjustment, I believe, to 16.
Correct. 513 and 16.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Venetia Plaza site plan as detailed in the planning staff memo dated May 2nd, 2019, subject to the, what I believe provides it would be top 21 conditions, as well as those modifications in the, in condition, previously numbered condition 16 and 13.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That brings us to planning portion. Any issues, Ed?
None that I, I need to bring up? Do you have any?
No.
I have nothing.
Fantastic. Meeting adjourned.